I'd like to call to order this study session for Urbana School District 116 for January the ninth, two thousand and eighteen. Roll call, please.
Member Carter.
Here.
Member Hall.
Here.
Member Patton.
Here.
Member Pulaski.
Here.
Member Fisher is here, Vice President Rollins Gate.
Here.
And President Gert.
Here. We are all here this evening, so we do have a quorum. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications to this evening's agenda?
No, there are not.
Are there any citizen statements? Any citizen that wishes to address the board, please fill out a Goldenrod sheet and turn it into our recording secretary. And while we're taking time to, for you folks to react to that announcement, we'd like to recognize Jay Morris this evening, who is a junior who is running the cameras for us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. Seeing no citizens that wish to address the board, we have no call for an executive session after tonight's meeting. We do need a motion to approve the agenda. Moved in second at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. We have no administrative briefings and reports, but we have some great commendations and recognitions tonight.
Yes.
Don?
Thank you. We're actually going to start with our recognition of five staff members who have achieved National Board teacher status this year. And we have some of them in the room, but to start us off, I would like to bring up two of our National Board cohort facilitators, who are very dynamic and dedicated people. So if I could have Julie Erlinger and Beth Mears come up. They both serve as instructional coaches, but then they also have used their own personal experience with National Board to help coach several cohorts of Urbana teachers and even teachers outside of Urbana through the National Board process. So I asked them to come and talk a little bit, and then I'll let you guys, since you have the microphone then, first turn, hit the push button on the front to get the light to go green.
Perfect. And then I'll let you introduce the National Board teachers this year.
Have you done that? Okay?
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, we just wanted to take a few minutes just to talk a little bit about National Board and what it is. Both Julie and I are, as Don said, we are cohort facilitators. So our district has two different cohorts. I have a cohort that meets at Lille School. In fact, tonight we both had meetings before we got here. I have mostly elementary teachers in my cohort, who are not only from Urbana, but from also surrounding districts, but all of them are elementary. Do you want to talk about yours?
Yeah, and then I have a all-high-school cohort, actually. We have had now, luckily, for four years, been able to sustain that. We are a larger building, so we have more people that we can kind of pull in, but it's been really nice to be able to have that cohort all from the same building and have common students, common interests, common professional development goals, just within that same space. So that's been fantastic, and some of them will be recognized here tonight.
So I think all of you have a handout that we just kind of wanted to just briefly go over. It's two-sided, and I was going to talk just a second about what National Board is and talk a little bit about some research that's been done about National Board-certified teachers. So this is a very rigorous voluntary process that requires teachers to demonstrate evidence that their teaching has positively impacted student learning. And all of the teachers that are going to be recognized tonight have done that, and this is a process that can take anywhere from one to three years. It is hopeful that it's going to take, now that the process has been kind of revamped a little bit, they'll take, hopefully, teachers anywhere between two and three years. So ours, people that are being recognized tonight, it did take them three years to go through the process. And right now in our cohorts, we have our teachers that did two, that did part of it last year, and they're doing part of it this year. So they will submit their components this year. Your handout that you have where it talks about the proven impact of board-certified teachers on student achievement, I just wanted to highlight a couple of pieces on here. Right in the middle, it talks about students that are taught by board-certified teachers learn more than students taught by other teachers. And right below that, that sentence, estimates of the increase in learning are on the order of an additional one to two months of instruction. The positive impact of having a board-certified teacher is even greater for minority and low-income students. And I think the graphics at the bottom of that sheet really show a lot as far as the learning that can increase when our students are served with an NBCT. So our hope, what we're really trying in Urbana, is to increase that number of NBCTs, especially for me personally at the elementary level. When we look at the number of teachers that are National Board-certified in Urbana, the majority of those teachers are at the high school, at the secondary level. We have just a small number at the elementary level, and none of those in the elementary level are in a classroom. We are either some type of a specialist. So my own personal goal is that I'm really, really trying to get our elementary teachers more involved with National Board. So Julie's going to talk a little bit about the different pieces of National Board.
Yeah, so if you flip the paper that you have, the flyer, that I'll largely be speaking from it or about it. When Beth mentioned that these teachers have been on this process for like, and I'm just going to add this in because I think they deserve this. National Board rolled out a brand-new process three years ago. And so these cohorts that we have been working with were in that initial rollout process, which meant they had to have great patience with National Board as they were slowly pulling out the new pieces. It was not, it's never easy to achieve National Board. It is a great deal of work and reflection, but I think for this group, it was particularly a challenging process because they were kind of doing it as National Board was really initially sending it out to them. So the three-year process was a hard-fought three-year process, I think, for them. So within those three years, there are four pieces that National Board-certified teachers have to go through to achieve. And I can speak to it in terms of the two pieces together per year. So for instance, the ones that we're working with this year are working on Components one and three on your sheet. And Component one is a content knowledge piece because one of the propositions is that teachers know their content and know how to teach it. And that is tested actually at an assessment center, which they go onto computers, and they do three essay questions about how to teach their content, and a number, I take forty-five, multiple-choice selected response questions about their content. Component three is called Teaching Practice and Learning Environment, and this is not so much a favorite in the sense that teachers are videotaping themselves and they have to watch themselves on tape, which none of us really, I don't know of anybody who likes to watch themselves on tape. And they willingly share their tapes with each other in the cohorts. And really, we're looking at what's the environment that the teacher is creating within that classroom in order for students to thrive in there and be successful. Next year, the cohorts will be working on Components two and four, and these candidates have already done this. Component two is Differentiation and Instruction, so how do you work to meet the needs and strengths of students who are very different in your classroom? And we all know within our Urbana classrooms, we have a wide range of students with different abilities. So they have to show through student work how they're meeting those different needs. And Component four is called Effective and Reflective Practitioner, and that's evidence of the ability as a reflective practitioner and how you apply your knowledge to students. And it has a lot to do with student needs and professional needs and how you work with those and meet those. So those are the four pieces to the National Board process.
Right. And tonight, we'll have, there's another candidate who, she actually renewed her certification. And she also had four pieces, four types of components that she also had to submit again, a little bit different than when you initially go through the process. So, and again, that's another great achievement, to go through this and then to decide you're going to go through it again.
It is not a permanent status.
Right.
You must renew.
Right, right.
And that renewal is every ten years, is that right?
With the old process, that's exactly what it was, every ten years. I do believe that after twenty nineteen, so the people that are renewing after two thousand and nineteen, it has changed, and it'll only be good for five years. But it won't be as rigorous, meaning when we renewed, we had to do the four components. Now, when you renew for every five years, you'll only be doing two components.
The thought is that they're making it more manageable for teachers on a full workload to do it.
Which was why they went ahead and they revamped it. And I do think, being able to stretch it out, it is more manageable. When they went through it and did all four of them in one year, it was very stressful and difficult. So, one thing I think both Julie and I would really like to say to everyone sitting here is how much we do appreciate your support for National Board. Many of you at Central Office have had nothing but good things to say about National Board. You're there to support us, to support our cohort. When we come to you for things, you are willing to listen, and so we very much appreciate
Absolutely.
the things that you have done for us to really help our teachers become nationally board-certified. So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Well, thank the two of you, and we should also add that we also have Brian Lake, who works very closely with you as a third member of the support. He's not able to be here tonight. So should we introduce our?
That would be wonderful.
That's the best part.
So actually, maybe we'll do a little receiving line with the board here, because I think they need to get up. Yes, I completely agree. So if the board wants to go out there, I'll stay at my microphone, and I'll just, I shook all of your hands earlier, so congratulations again. And I'll just read names. So I'm going to start with our renewal, who is a music teacher. Karen, you're coming up. Okay. Sorry, now, now I can't see anybody. No, that's okay, that's okay. Karen De Bush is our person who worked on her renewal this year, and so congratulations, Karen. And then the next three are all from Urbana High School as part of the Urbana High School cohort. And Michelle Lankowski. Kevin Kennedy. And Allison Pentey. We also have Mark Staladke, who also earned his National Board and is not able to be here tonight. And before the National Board people leave, and Julie and Beth, I would like to have Joanne get a picture of you guys somewhere that has a little bit. Oh, up here. Oh, even better. Oh, okay. All right, so can I get my assistants out here too? Our next commendation recognition is someone who, if you missed the article in the paper, it was a wonderful article in the paper. And I can't say enough about how, I shared this with him the other day when he came into my office during his last week. Danny McCartney is one of those people in this district who, forty-three and a half years as an employee, and many more as a student and graduate of Urbana High School. But he's one of those people who exemplifies the kind of positive attitude and just unflappable, you know, dedication, where nothing really seemed to bother him. And as the last, as the last few weeks went on, and I actually heard that he has quite the sense of humor and can be involved in quite the practical jokes, I was actually really surprised at how unflappable he always comes across to everyone else because of some of the hijinks that sometimes go on behind the scenes. But all of those, I think, were what made him such an amazing person to have in the district. And he was one of those people that got to see all parts of the district every single day. And for that, I think, I envy you for that, but I also appreciate the fact that you were the person out there smiling and bringing a smile to everyone every day. So Danny, I would just like to personally say thank you for your forty-three and a half years of service to Urbana School District. And Matt Abatessa, Director of Facilities, I don't know if you'd like to say any words as well. But then we'd definitely like to have Danny up here.
Yeah, absolutely, if you don't mind. I came here in July. I only had the privilege of working with Danny for six months. But it was the type of employee where, once he retired, you know, it was a moment when I was in my office, I just felt like going, I didn't spend enough time with him. What is he doing? Let me, let me offer him a position to come back as summer help. Whether we have that, whether we have that position available or not, I don't care. I pay him out of my own pocket. He's that type of employee. So I, even though it was only six months, it was just, it was jaw-dropping to see what he brought to the school district each and every day. And I really appreciated just working with him, even though it was that short period of time.
We get to bring Danny back several times, like for retirement events. So again, thank you, Danny, and thank you for it. I think you can have your seats now.
Okay, we are, no policy review tonight, but we have one study topic, which is the school improvement plan for Dr. Williams School. So if Danielle and Thomas are both going to work on it. Danny, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Could you turn on your mic? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. It is our pleasure to come and present before you tonight. We're very excited to share with you our school improvement plan for this year. We did go a little different than the plan we've norm, I'm sorry, than the plan we've normally put into place, and so we've been very excited about what we're doing this year. One of the things that we do notice is, and want you to make sure that you're aware, is that our student enrollment did go down. We do have four hundred and forty students with twenty-one classrooms, eight of which are dual-language classrooms, and they are from kindergarten to fifth grade.
So I think it's important for the audience to know, your enrollment went down by design.
Yes.
Yeah, we.
Yes. We did have an enrollment cap.
Took steps to reduce your enrollment.
Yes.
It's not because people were deselecting the school.
No. We were fortunate enough actually to lower enrollment at the beginning of the year by approximately a hundred students. We had far more students coming than we anticipated in what we ended with the year, in the previous school year. And we are still making sure to keep that cap in mind as we continue to move forward. But we're grateful that the board saw fit to put that enrollment cap in place. And as, we appreciate Central Office staff as you've continued to work with us consistently, as we still have people coming in daily. We had registrations even today, and we're still managing that enrollment cap. So it is a continual process, and we appreciate your patience and continued support with that. We do have a number of different programs that we have at the school. We're very proud to be a participant of the Splash program, so we continue to work with Linda Gibbons, who writes grants for that program. We do have four sessions throughout the school year, and we do have a summer program as well. We have Illini mentoring that comes and works at our school two days a week. CU one-to-one mentoring that comes throughout the week, that meets with our students individually. We also have talks mentoring that we have with the students. We have partnerships with Parkland College, of course, the University of Illinois, Grand Canyon University, America Reads and America Counts, who work in our classrooms daily, as well as the Neighborhood Connection Center, who partners with our building as well. Other opportunities that we have and partnerships we have within the school are Drop Everything and Read and Before-School Ready Readers. So we do encourage the students in the morning to read while we are preparing for the beginning of the day. Many of our students arrive at around seven forty, and so once we enter the building, we encourage them to read for fifteen minutes to start their day off and to get their minds working and exercise that muscle as they prepare for the day. And it allows for a very quiet start to our morning, and it allows for reflection as well. Stone Creek has been a huge supporter of our school for a number of years, and they have continued their partnership with us this year as well. They were very gracious, and they had a huge turkey drive right before Thanksgiving. And I think the weather was kind of a damper on that for the number of people who came out. And they were very, very monumental in supporting a number of Urbana families, not only through Dr. Williams, King, Thomas Paine, and Early Childhood Schools. So they did come and drop off a number of turkey baskets, and we were able to distribute them to all of those schools. So it was a very generous donation, and we were grateful to get those dinners and items into the hands of families. They were very grateful as well. We also partner with the Rotary Club, who provides dictionaries for our third-grade students, and the American Legion Post 559, who has continued to come and support us and have made a number of generous donations, including making sure we have lots of socks, warm gloves, and hats for our students who may be in need. So our very first goal, this was the change. Normally, we've taken on an academic goal that was focused on literacy and mathematics. And this year, we saw fit that we would continue and start looking at writing across the whole building. So we've been doing professional development with all of our teachers monthly so that we could have a building-wide writing focus within our school. The goal is written as, "Students will improve written communication skills through the use of narrative, expository, and opinion writing." So what does that look like? The staff are using rubrics to assess students' progress while providing them with continuous instruction as well as feedback on that. One of the things that we've noticed is that we weren't always using rubrics consistently, and we are trying to make sure that we're teaching our teachers how to use those rubrics and how we can have consistent dialogue and feedback for students to continue to improve their writing so that they know how to receive feedback as well as provide feedback to their peers in that peer-editing phase, which is so crucial for early writers when they're trying to learn how to write and coach other peers and students how to write as well. The staff also provide students with opportunities to write for a variety of purposes, as well as thinking about the number of audiences you're writing for, because that also looks very different. Our focus has been on educating our families about the writer's workshop process. And we're looking at making sure our students know how to include their voice within these writing opportunities to make that writing the most meaningful, so that it matches their purpose and that you're using that inflection to get your point across in the most effective way.
This, our second goal was a behavioral goal, in which we were having students focus on those self-management skills to help them be successful academically at our school, as well as have those social-emotional relationships that are strong. So as we look at it, when it's fully implemented, the school culture will focus on positive and respectful relationships with all students and families. And we will have staff conduct classroom audits to ensure ethical practices, and teachers holding daily morning meetings to teach calming strategies and cultivate a positive classroom environment, which has been great to see. I've been going into teachers' classrooms and seeing their morning meetings, and the level of respect that students are showing to each other as they communicate and talk about their day and talk about their experiences at school has been powerful. I came from the middle school last year where we had advisory periods in the morning, and that was useful for those same purposes. So to see it transitioning into the elementary schools has been really great to see. I think it's going to have a really big impact on our students moving forward, especially in those peer-to-peer relationships. Teachers are really good at fostering the teacher-to-student relationship, but sometimes students struggle with developing the peer-to-peer relationships, and I think these morning meetings are having a real positive impact on that. We also want families to understand classroom and school expectations related to their behavioral goals, so making sure our teachers and our staff members are communicating clear, consistent expectations for behavior to the parents so that they aren't surprised why my student is getting a phone call. They are aware of the expectations for behavior in our school, and it's clear to them, and they understand our process. And then students will utilize appropriate problem-solving tools through social-emotional learning lessons. So this is through their teachers, it's through our social worker. They're doing a great job of getting in the classroom and providing those students with support. We have hug sheets, which is a check-in-check-out system for students in which those students who we've kind of identified as needing the most intensive work with their social-emotional learning are getting that daily check-in to see how their day went. They're getting almost hourly input from a staff member with, "How good are you doing?" It's usually a smiley face, a frowny face, or an in-the-middle face. So it's that almost immediate feedback that allows students to correct themselves and feel successful.
And then with that, too, we do use the Second Step curriculum, which the district has provided for us, and we value that system because it does allow us to go deeper into those skills that students might not be aware of, using their calming strategies, but also knowing words like empathy and how that transfers over into being able to be a good peer and partner for your classmate. One of the things that is very important, whenever we ever start thinking about a continuous improvement plan, is making sure that we have fostered partnerships with our families. So this is built into the plan, so I didn't want to leave it off because it's built into both of the goals. And so we wanted to make sure to take time to acknowledge that the most important way that we can be successful is to have parent engagement activities at the school that is supporting our students and their academic needs. So we have had a very positive success rate this semester, this past semester, and we hope to see the same thing this semester with the parent engagement activities we've done. We look at the STEAM activities, and ours this year has been mostly focused on the arts, which has been different and really nice, because in the past years, we focused mostly on science and engineering. And it's been really creative and fun. We've had a creation cafe twice, and we will plan to have another one in February and then one toward the end of the year. So the kids are coming, they're producing writing, they're coming up with poems that they share in front of an audience with enthusiasm. So all those things, it's connected back to that writing goal. It's bringing in their voice and their creativity and allowing them to shine and show the things that they can do so that we are looking fully across the board. To go more specifically, we hope that they attend these events, so the parents are attending the event so they can learn more about it. But we're also then focusing on that parent engagement that we are here. We want to produce partnerships, and we want you to always know that you can come and learn about how to support your student with our goal of writing throughout the building. And the students are engaging in these activities, not only in the classroom, but again, in those evening events, so that they can learn more about how this can look. Writing in the classroom looks very different from creative writing when we're doing it more in a presentation mode. So we've had Speak Cafe come, and we've had like a mini version, if you're familiar with that, of the Speak Cafe model, which has been wonderful. And we're very appreciative to Shaya Robinson, who's come and helped us out in the building with that.
Along those lines, there's also, this year, we've had the Dual Language hosting the Supper and Science events in our building. So to go along with that STEAM event and kind of outreach to our dual-language parents and getting them involved, that's been a great, great activity for our students as well.
Listed here are the members of our school improvement team, and we did meet in May at our institute to develop this plan. We all came together to focus on what our goal would be for this school year, and we continue to meet and come back and look at what our next steps are planned. So this truly is a living document that's been going on, and we've come back to it a number of times throughout the school year. It wasn't, we created it in May, and we don't know what's going on with the plan now. It truly has been moving along throughout the school year, which we've been very excited about, as that's always the goal. Well, thank you so much. Any questions that you have for us? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to compliment you on what you're doing, because my goddaughter comes back and tells me, she's kindergarten and first grade. She's speaking Spanish.
Oh, wonderful.
And because one of her friends is Spanish-speaking. And I quoted something out one of the. And I quoted something out of one of the Alice in Wonderland book, and I had said something wrong about Alice getting, you know, talking to her. I wasn't reading the book. And remember, she's only in first grade. She recanted that. "No, that is what happened." So I know you're doing good over there, and then, no, seriously.
Thank you.
Because they do. And I was just, you know, just overwhelmed with it. And then the other thing is that you all have these partnerships with these kids. And it is meaning something to the little kids, because they see bigger people like them coming in there into the school. And I didn't know that. You said it, but she had mentioned about some mentoring program. And she said, "They got somebody for the guys." And she said, "When will I say?" "Well, when you get older." But she had already, these kids are noticing those things. So I just want to say, keep up that good work, because that's gonna mean something later on in the future.
Thank you.
So thank you all so much.
Thank you so much. And that is always our focus. We want our kids to know that everybody is somebody, and each and every day, we are planting seeds with them as they continue to blossom into beautiful flowers. That's always what I focus on. Thank you.
Other questions for the team?
Could I, could you say more about what the Summer and Science Event is, and also the Speak Cafe, both of them?
So the Speak Cafe, Shayah Robinson is one of the community members that we had come in. So I think if you go onto campus and see some of those events, it is more, you can sign up, you write your name, you can come up and share a poem. It can be spoken word. It can be more knowledge-based, where you can just share information about something. It really can be any number of things, and then it's really just your work. So the kids, most of the kids came up and did either a poem, or they shared music. So some of our fifth graders, who are playing violin, came up and they played the violin for us. So it's really just a way to show your artistic talent. Our focus was more on the writing, but we also embraced any of the ways that the students expressed themselves. There were some community members who also came. They had a special guest who was able to demonstrate more of that freestyle spoken word, which was a very great experience for us, because we see it in many forms, but it was really nice to see the more poetic version of just a freestyle speaking. So it's been nice.
Say, the freestyle also allows to, to express their feelings, you know, what's going on in them, to be able to put it into music.
Yeah, I see.
And so that is, that's a good technique, because that helps them express all the, what all is going on with them. Yeah.
And you said the summer-
And then the Supper and Science Event with the Dual Language Program.
Yes, so the Supper and Science is, you're invited to come and have supper. They typically have pizza, and then they do a scientific activity. So not only is there learning and actual experimentation going on, but then they're talking about what they're doing at the same time. And we've had a large success rate with that, as well as our Last Posados, which was a partnership with Leo's PTA and ours. So it was a very nice, well-attended event.
The Supper and Science is done all in Spanish, so they do encourage family members to come, even if they don't speak Spanish, because that's part of the experience, is to experience that, trying to communicate with someone who you can't maybe naturally communicate with. So that's part of why they do it that way.
I just-
Innovative, yeah.
A quick question. I think this is fabulous, what you guys are doing, and I'm sure that you've had great parent turnout, you know, because a lot of parents now, they are making time to see what's going on in the schools, which I think is fabulous. I just had a quick question on the back. What exactly is a PD cadre leader?
Oh, yes.
I've never heard of that. I just, if you could clarify, that would be great.
So it's a professional development cadre leader, and so we have a number of people who have applied for that position. So they are some of the people who help us implement our equity work within the building. But it also extends outside of that, because with professional development, we want to be mindful that it's not equity-based or academic-based and curriculum-based. Really, they're all working together within the same plan and team. So it could be writing is one of our focuses, but it's also looking at what are we doing within our equity, equity work within the building. So our PD cadres for this year were specifically going more for that equity work, but we also are still pushing forth our full plan, so we make sure that they're both coinciding with one another. So, does that help? Yes, sir?
So I would, to appreciate, I'll start over. Thank you for our wonderful report. I love hearing about all the community engagement that's going on and the positive developments going on with, with student learning. But I was wondering, is it being reflected in your quantitative assessments as well, in terms of behavior and in terms of academic reports? And how, and are you, is there a feedback mechanism from those quantitative assessments back into what your plans are doing?
I do think that anytime you look at a decrease in enrollment, obviously, that's gonna have a major impact, and it allows you to have a much smoother process with presenting and producing outcomes within learning. So I think that we are seeing a decrease in our behavioral outcomes daily, and we're also increasing the learning within the classroom. I do see a growth, and I think that we are noticing that in certain areas, we're adding on extra layers of support to make up for the variances, maybe. So we have, at one specific grade level, we have a lower number of students, but they also came in with a large group from last year. And so we're trying to make up some of the needs that were there from the previous school year, when they were in large kindergarten classrooms. And it's, oh, sorry. It's really hard to make up for that difference, and so we're really putting in additional supports to impact that. But overall, across the full building, we are seeing, I think, major improvements in where our students are reading and where they are with their math computational skills with the assessments that we have. I don't know that it'll show up on PARC, but I do not use that as my baseline for success with the school.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right, thank you.
We have no call for any future special or executive meetings, and so we're ready for the superintendent's report.
Yeah, so as I did last time, I'd like to break it up kind of into three main categories: equity, excellence, and engagement. Related to equity, I am very positive and upbeat after spending most of the morning with our administrative cabinet, which is all the principals, assistant principals, central office administrators and coordinators, specifically working on the draft of our district goals, which the board will be seeing later this year, hopefully. And those goals are really kind of fed from the school improvement plans that you've been hearing about. But also, we've been spending a lot of time looking at those goals through an equity lens, and talking about how those goals reflect our belief and our values related to racial equity. And so it was a great meeting this morning. The time flew by, but we got a lot done. And those are always inspiring times when you get a group of very thoughtful and dedicated people in a room working on, working on ways to transform and improve the education for our students. So that's one. The second one is, some of the board members may have gotten an email from IASB about an equity-informed training that's coming up, I believe, in April. I've gone ahead and reached out to the coordinators of that, of that workshop, asked for kind of an agenda and the resources that they use to make sure that their definitions of equity align with ours. And so I'll let you know about that in the future, because I think it could be a good potential for board engagement around issues of equity. But I want to make sure that it's well-aligned to the work that we're doing here in Urbana. In terms of excellence, we already saw some great excellence earlier this evening, not just for the school improvement plan from Dr. Williams, but also our national board teachers who are being recognized tonight, and I'd just like to give them a shout-out. And then in terms of student excellence, I had the great opportunity, and I kind of brag about them a lot, but they seem to be getting a lot of requests to present in the community recently. Our UHS acapella groups performed last Friday night at the Broadway Food Hall, kind of surprise grand opening. And it was actually something the City of Urbana put on as part of the city's engagement around issues of rebranding. The city is, if you don't know, having a flag competition. And so people attending this could not only vote on their favorite type of burger, nacho or chili burger, from one of the food vendors at the new food hall, but then you could also vote on the different flag designs that were there. And so they were all displayed. But our acapella group sang for almost an hour and a half that night. So it was very cool. The venue is literally right across the parking lot, due east of here. And it's nice that the city and our local business people are looking at our high school students to provide that kind of entertainment for an event like that. So very pleased with that. They did an awesome job of representing. And then finally, the third area is engagement. And I would say that the one thing, and again, it was mentioned in Dr. Williams' school improvement plan, January is National Mentoring Month, and last night, the mayor of Urbana, Diane Marlin, proclaimed January as National Mentoring Month and recognized the work of the CU one-to-one mentoring program specifically. And we had some mentor, mentee pairs, and our director, Tom Howley, was there to talk about it. There's a number of events coming up in January related to mentoring. If anybody in our viewing audience would like more information, you can contact Tom Howley at Urbana Middle School. His email is thowley, H-O-W-L-E-Y, at USD116.org. And sign up to be a mentor. It's an amazing way to, to spend time getting to know an individual, supporting an individual, and watching a student grow. And it's a wonderful program. And then the final thing on engagement is, as many of you know, we had a winter weather closing last week, and that's always an amazing time for engaging with the community on social media. And I will use this opportunity in seriousness to say it's always a good time to remind people to think before they post and make sure that it's true, helpful, inspiring, or informative, necessary, and kind. Not necessarily, you know, things directed at me, but also things going back and forth. There was a lot of rumors going back and forth on a couple of days about whether or not schools would be open or closed. But also engagement around the issues of our, our amazing emergency management teams and communication here in Urbana, getting the roads cleared for, on, on Sunday night into Monday, as well as our grounds crew and Mr. Abitessa, who by 3:50 a.m., I was getting reports that the parking lots were all salted and cleared, and that the walkways were shoveled on school property. And they, we then all started driving around to make sure that the buses, bus routes were passable. And again, I was, I was pleased with attendance on both last Friday, which was especially cold, and yesterday, which was a little bit of icy coming to work and school. This is under engagement, and so there was one other thing I was gonna say about engagement, and that is, oh, yes. I want to give a special shout-out to one meteorologist in the area. And the reason why I'm giving him a shout-out is not because I'm trying to, you know, drum up business for him, but he's an Urbana graduate. And Andrew Pritchard approached me earlier this year and just said, "You know, as an Urbana graduate, I know what it's like to be a student during winter in Urbana, and is there anything I can do?" And he's an amazing meteorologist, and he's nailed both of these, and so he's batting a thousand. So I'm very pleased that he reached out, and he was communicating with me almost 24/7 over the last several days about weather, which, again, goes above and beyond, but he's, he's very much a fan of Urbana and a Tiger himself, and he's moved back to the area. And I just remembered the other engagement piece I was gonna say. So that's a shout-out to Andrew Pritchard. He runs a website and a Twitter account called Shambana Weather. I think it's Shambana WX is the Twitter handle. He provides a great deal of information besides just the forecast. He's almost as much of a weather geek as I am, so. So the other engagement piece was Joanne Geigner, our communications specialist, always monitors our, our web activity and web traffic. And the funny thing was, going from last week to this week, last week being the last week of winter break, so there was not a lot of engagement on social media with us, to this week, which was, in one day, we had more hits than we've had the entire school year. We had a thirty-five thousand percent increase in traffic to our Facebook page from last week to this week already. So that's just one of those trivial pieces of data that, that I just thought was really funny. When she showed it to me, I said, "The decimal's in the wrong spot." And she said, "No, it's that we had no traffic last week because it was winter break." And we got a lot of traffic this week, so. That's it. That's my board report.
All right. Any board reports this evening?
The IASB Illini Division is having a meeting on March 1st, so if you guys want to attend, you know, we'll be here.
In Champaign.
All right. Hearing no board reports, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. We're adjourned.